Okay, is everyone back? It's 10 o'clock. Let's move on to, um, so number 18. Kirsten, what do we do here? This one is not necessary anymore based on the previous item.
Right, so, um, we can just table it. You don't have to vote on it.
All right, so do we need a motion to table it, or how does that work?
If there, if everyone consent, if council consents to just, um, not vote on it, that will suffice.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree as well.
Okay, Leon?
Are there any, any nays?
I agree. Is Rod still here?
Rod's here.
Why don't, oh, you know why? Because I have the participant list blocking other people, no? Oh, oh, his video is just gone. Okay. Rod, are you back? Leon, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay. I'll unmute. I can't unmute him because he's muting himself. Okay. Well, does it have to be unanimous, or what?
No, you got four.
Okay. Okay, oh, number 19 should be fast. Resolution rescinding city manager designation as city employee slash official to attend closed sessions of the city council and keep closed session minutes, and reaffirming the city clerk as a designated closed session minute keeper. Municipal Code Amendment to Cupertino Municipal Code Section 2.20-010, Record Keeping Duties Closed Sessions of Chapter 2.20 City Clerk to Title II Administration and Personnel to Clarify Limited Access to Closed Session Minutes. So is there any kind of, uh, for the public, can you explain this Heather, or, or Deb? Here we go.
Heather, you're muted.
We can't hear. Whoever is presenting this, you're muted.
Heather's presenting, I'm not, so.
Might be having some audio issues, I cannot unmute her either.
There we go. Apologies for that. And now, can you see my screen?
We can. Can you go into slideshow mode?
Yes. Apologize, apologies for that. Okay, so this item concerns clarifications to the city's regulations for keeping closed session minutes. State law provides that local agencies may by resolution or ordinance designate a city employee or official to attend closed sessions and keep minutes of topics discussed and decisions made. Council previously adopted a resolution designating the city manager as the official to keep minutes, but subsequently decided to retain municipal code provisions assigning this task to the city clerk. There were also questions about how the existing municipal code addresses access to these confidential minutes. So this item proposes two clarifying actions for closed session minutes. The first action is to rescind the prior resolution designating the city manager as the minute keeper and thereby reaffirming the designation of the city clerk as the closed session minute keeper in the municipal code ordinance. The second action is to amend the municipal code provisions regarding city clerk's duties to clarify limited access to the closed session minutes. And the amendments in the proposed ordinance would clarify the following provisions. It would allow the city council to authorize the city manager or the city attorney to view the minute book for specific entries. It would also update the code to be consistent with Fair Political Practices Commission regulations, specifying that council members who were recused from a specific meeting may not access the minutes for those meetings. And then consistent with government code, with the government code, it would provide that access is allowed to members of the city council and to a court. And this is the recommended action to adopt the resolution and conduct the first reading of the ordinance. And I am available to answer any questions if you have them.
All right, we do have one hand raised from the public. Kitty, welcome.
And have I stopped sharing my screen?
No, it's still there.
Okay.
Kitty.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Was there a lapse in the closed session meeting minutes? Was there a time when no meeting minutes were taken? How long was that lapse? And would a council member be able, for example, to read the meeting minutes for any closed sessions leading up to the 2014 general plan amendment?
Would you like me to answer that, Mayor?
Oh, yes, please, Heather, answer that.
Yes, um, well, I was surprised as well to see this municipal code, given that the clerk hadn't been attending closed sessions and keeping an official minute book. I'm not sure when that practice stopped. The city attorney and city manager and department heads kept their own minutes of individual council meetings, and so there are those records if they have been retained. But they are not considered an official minute book per se. They were the city attorney's or city manager's personal notes. And so for any individual meeting, we would need to go back, and I cannot say whether they, where those are for the items you've discussed.
Anything else, Kitty? Guess not. Okay.
Oh, no, no, I, so I, there's no record. There is no record. So the question was also, how long was the lapse for? So when, when was the last time these, these meeting minutes had been taken? And then I'd also like to know who, who authorized them to no longer be taken? Who, who made that choice?
This was the, the last city clerk was Grace Schmidt, and she did not keep official minutes. So I don't know, that was quite a long time ago. I'll ask our city clerk if she has any updates on that. But I, you know, have no information about how this lapse occurred.
I can comment that the prior, the previous city clerk, Kim Smith, attended very few. And she was the clerk for, I believe, 18 years. And that was a council, a council choice to exclude the clerk from the meetings.
I will say that the prior, that the municipal code does provide that the city council can designate someone other than the city clerk to attend closed session and keeps minutes. So it may have been that they had a policy of designating, for instance, the city attorney or the city manager to keep minutes. But, and again, I am not saying there's no record. It's just not this official minute book that has been referenced in the, in the government code.
And it would have been the previous city attorney that kept the minutes.
I'd make a motion to move this item. Yeah, I'll second that.
Hey, I have a question. You mentioned, you mentioned now the policy is city manager and city attorney don't have access to the minute book unless the council authorizes certain specific items? I was, I'm kind of surprised by that.
Well, again, we don't. We have our own notes from if we were in those meetings. Once the council begins to have an official minute book that is kept by the city clerk, then this policy would allow the council to specify for any meeting that the city manager and the city attorney can access them.
Why do we need this kind of condition? Is that?
Otherwise, it's ambiguous about whether they can or not. Because the, the code says it's only accessible by the city council.
Oh, because the existing code says it's only accessible by the city council. So you've made the provision so the manager and attorney are allowed to view.
That's correct.
The council have to vote to allow that.
That's correct, or indicate when they have the closed session.
Okay. Is that, would that add a lot of administrative burden for city manager and attorney?
The easiest thing would be for any particular closed session while council is holding that, they could just indicate as part of the record whether they would like to allow future city managers or city attorneys to access the minutes.
Oh, but usually you guys are in there, right? So it's only if, in case.
Yes, and as I said, we would have our own notes as well.
Okay, okay.
All right, can we do a roll call vote?
Not yet, because.
Okay.
Just want to point out, we have a resolution as well as an ordinance. So you should first of all do that stepwise. I want to just make some remarks on it and state that I did bring this up in the middle of last year. So from a procedural perspective and from a record keeping perspective, we really should be following the original intent of the municipal code. I know along the way, as we just, the practice has kind of fallen off the wayside. But if you think about the decisions that are made in closed session by the city council, if no one is required to take notes and no one is actually taking formal notes, you know, we do make a lot of decisions over time. And oftentimes, you may not even remember what happened two months ago, let alone like three years or four years or more ago. And so I think from a procedural perspective, this is absolutely the right thing to do. And we need to affirm the fact that the officer who is designated by our city to keep our records is the person responsible for keeping those records. So I fully support. I think it's thoughtful. And to council member Chow's question about why would we require council authorization for the city manager or city attorney to access, you know, it is absolutely the case that these are, these are councils' records. And so we need to be making those designations along the way. So I see this as a very necessary procedural fix. And I appreciate this being brought forward in this manner. But again, you know, without, I don't think we need to make it an amendment, but I would suggest that the mayor's motion be focused upon ordinance 20-2205, as well as resolution number 20-014, and that we take it in a stepwise manner with the resolution first.
Why don't you do that, since you have that open right now?
Okay, I'll move that the city council adopt resolution number 20-070, rescinding resolution number 20-014. And I won't read the summary, but the summary is as in our agenda.
And would someone like me to read the, conduct the first reading of the ordinance?
Perhaps we could.
Yeah, let's rescind the, let's do the rescission first, I think. Is that how we should do it, Madam City Attorney?
Yes.
All right, so I'll second the rescinding the resolution.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Scharf?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and now Vice Mayor, can you do the ordinance, I mean, the second part of this?
Oh, sure. Madam City Clerk, if you would, please conduct the first reading.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 20-2205 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending city code section 2.20.010, record keeping duties closed sessions of chapter 2.20, city clerk to Title II Administration and Personnel to clarify limited access to closed session minutes.
Thank you. I move that ordinance number 20-2205 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute first reading there.
Sure, I'll second. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Scharf?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, um, we are on to item 20, consideration of city council summer recess and cancellation of meetings. Is there a staff report?
Sir, just quickly, the city council annually recesses from its regularly scheduled meeting schedule during the summer. Routinely, this is prompted by council members' summer schedules. That is not the case this year, but we wanted to bring this item back to council in case you wish to consider canceling meetings still.
Okay. We normally cancel the last meeting of one month and the first meeting of the next month. Is that July and August usually?
Last year, when I came in, you had canceled the, a meeting in June and a meeting in July. So I would recommend, because of the COVID situation, maybe later in the summer might be a time when people could actually take a vacation or get away, so.
That is a good point.
I would recommend August, September, or something like that.
And also, you know, we're hoping to have the Westport thing eventually come back to council after it goes back to planning commission. And, you know, that would be good if we could get that, get that done in a timely manner without delaying it more than a couple of extra weeks. So, yeah, I mean, personally, I have no plans right now for June or July. It's fine with me if we did, um, if we did August, I mean, I, it doesn't matter.
I may be gone the first week of August. I mean, one, one thing would be to think about early August and then early September, given Labor Day there.
That'd be good.
Okay, so you'll be gone, you'll be gone August 4th, Rod?
I may be. I mean, if, if I can travel, I have some family business I need to handle that I couldn't, haven't been able to during this crisis, so.
Right.
You know, that's, that's only my input. If, if you, if you say, let's do late August, early September, the last meeting in August and early September, and, and my plans are what they are, I may just miss a meeting.
And we may still be doing Zoom meetings anyway, and you could still attend.
Well, there you go.
I mean, I think, I mean, the governor may.
Good point.
The governor may, um, we may be allowed to have in-person meetings, but he may not rescind his order, you know, for, for quite a while.
Yep.
Just because there could, you know, if there's a second wave and, um, you know, people need to do this from, from home or wherever. So, um, you know, I am fine with canceling August 18th and September 1st.
I can support the first meeting in August being canceled, as well as the, the September 1st meeting being canceled.
Then, then, then they're not consecutive, then.
Right. Well, you know, I think there's something to be said for not having six weeks off.
Yeah, you're right. You're, yeah, that's a good point.
What happens if you cancel two meetings?
The other item is that the schools start up on August 10th. And so if we were to cancel the first meeting in August, I think that makes a little bit more sense to align with, you know, a lot of people's availabilities. So. That seems like a good reason to me.
Yeah.
Or we could just take the summer off. Consider Westport in 2021. I mean, I don't know. Anyway, that would be my suggestion, the first meeting in August and the first meeting in September. In September, you know, as people pointed out, there's Labor Day, but this is a particularly, um, probably good September 1st Tuesday meeting to cancel because the Tuesday falls on September 1st. And it's actually the following Monday, that's Labor Day. So it's actually, I think, pretty good timing, so.
Sure, I can support August 4th and September 1st. Is there?
Second.
A question. So do we usually cancel two meetings?
Yes.
Yeah.
Practice?
Yeah.
Because we want the summer break?
Yes.
Because we have a break because we have so many extra meetings. I want a break now.
Me too.
Okay.
All right, so, yeah. So I think that's good direction. We don't need a resolution or an ordinance, right? We can just, um.
Oh, right, um, August 4th and September 1st?
First, yeah.
And, and it's, I mean, as long as everyone consents. Any nays? Okay. Carrie's, the general consent.
Okay, wonderful. That was fast. That was even less than 10 minutes. Okay, now we are on to item 21, Establishment of the Complete Streets Commission. Conduct the first reading of ordinance 20-2206 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending chapter 2.92 of the Cupertino Municipal Code to establish the Complete Streets Commission. Staff report.
That's Mayor, Vice Mayor members, council, Roger Lee. David Solomon, our transportation manager is going to give the presentation.
Thank you, Roger, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Next slide, please. So our staff recommendation for you this evening, conduct the first reading of ordinance of 20 XXX and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending chapter 2.92 of the Cupertino Municipal Code to establish the Complete Streets Commission. Next slide, please. Some background on this item. So the current Bicycle Pedestrian Commission in Cupertino was established back in 2002. It's a five-member commission. And to summarize the tasks that the commission has, they are responsible for updating the bicycle and pedestrian plans, responsible for receiving public input pertaining to all bike and ped transportation issues, and to make recommendations regarding bike and ped transportation improvements and the allocation of funds for bike and ped projects. Next slide. We feel it was efficient to have one transportation commission that considers all modes of travel. Currently, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, their focus is primarily on the needs of bicycles and pedestrians, as I indicated in the previous slide. Due to growing needs of transit and other users of the roadway, it was desired to create a commission that looks at all modes of transportation equally, rather than just to focus on bicycle and pedestrian needs. The additional responsibilities that staff is proposing for this Complete Streets Commission is to include traffic calming and enforcement within the purview of the commission, and to work more closely with the TIC Public Safety and the Sustainability Commissions. And finally, to expand to seven members. And I'd like to indicate that that last item of expansion to seven members isn't strictly necessary in order for the commission to achieve these additional responsibilities that are being proposed, so long as the, the members that are included in the commission have a sufficient breadth of responsibilities to include all of the, all of the items that I've discussed this evening. Next slide, please. So our proposal for you this evening is to create a Complete Streets Commission. There are other cities in the area that use a similar model, including Menlo Park, Los Altos, and Los Gatos. It'll still function as a bicycle and pedestrian advisory body in order to remain eligible for grant funding, but with expanded responsibilities. And let me explain a little bit about what that means. So there are certain funding sources, primarily the Transportation Development Act fund that we receive through MTC, on the order of about $50,000 or $60,000 a year. It's guaranteed, guaranteed funding intended to be used exclusively for bicycle and pedestrian related projects. In order to be eligible for this funding, a local agency has to have either a dedicated bicycle pedestrian commission or a Complete Streets Commission, such as we're proposing this evening, but maintain at least a couple of members on the commission that have a dedicated interest in bicycle and pedestrian improvements and advocacy. And the commission has to continue to review bicycle and pedestrian related projects. So as soon as, as long as the commission continues to retain those functions, we can have a Complete Streets Commission that encompasses all modes, instead of a specific bicycle and pedestrian commission, such as we've had since 2002. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. So our proposal this evening, a seven-member commission. Again, it doesn't necessarily have to be a seven-member commission. And I'll just, this is a lot of words on the slide, but I'll just, I'll read this so you have a complete picture of the responsibilities that we're proposing for this redefined commission. So this commission will help create multimodal transportation solutions and policies that enable safe, attractive, comfortable, and independent access and travel for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users, and motorists of all ages and abilities, and meet the regional requirements for functions and role of a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. And that last bit relates to the, the funding that I described previously. This commission will advise city council on projects and priorities for transportation-related capital improvements, bicycle, pedestrian, and, and other. Advise the city council on city policies relating to traffic congestion and traffic calming, and provide for community engagement, and serve as a conduit for community input. Next slide, please. Recommended action for council tonight is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending chapter 2.92 of the Cupertino Municipal Code to establish the Complete Streets Commission. And that concludes my presentation this evening. Thank you.
Wonderful. I see we have three people that wish to speak on this issue. So we will start now. Oh, my God, now there's seven. So we will start with Peggy Griffin. Everybody gets three minutes, although it's always appreciated if you're briefer than that. Welcome, Peggy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Dear Mayor Scharf, council members and staff, I do not support the proposal to increase the power and size of the current Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. The staff report cites other cities doing it, but there's no data. Pros, cons, what works for each city. It risks losing grant funding by diluting the focus of the Bike-Ped Commission. Adding more people means longer meetings. The Bike-Ped Commission does not need more power or increased responsibilities. Over the last several years, this commission has amassed a lot of power and influence above all commissions, even the planning commission. They do not need more. It feels like you are trying to pack the commission by increasing its members with your desirables or two more bike people. You didn't like it when the library commission was being combined. This feels like the same thing. Your proposed law does not require diversity in its commissioners. This new law does not prevent seven people from the same bike group to become commissioners. This new law does not require representatives from different modes of transportation or parts of town or age. With increased power and responsibility, a commission needs video recordings, minutes done by someone other than a commissioner, periodic checks to make sure they follow the rules of order and follow their agenda. But this committee doesn't have any of those. I feel that using the Bike-Ped Commission in this way will result in biased solutions which are one size fits all. Please do not do this. But if you do, start over with a new commission and balance it. Have them reapply. Now, all five are focused on bike pedestrian. Start over. Fix the law to require diversity and minimize the representatives from the same group. This will prevent or minimize Brown Act violations. Fix the law to be more specific as to responsibilities. Currently, the proposed law states any other activity that may be deemed appropriate. Currently, the proposed law states, "Any other activity that may be deemed appropriate or necessary." This is not objective. It leaves it open for abuse. Require videotaping, someone to prepare minutes, periodic legal review to ensure procedures are followed. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Peggy. Next, we are going on to Mooney. Welcome, Mooney.
Could you hear me?
We can.
Okay, Dan Mayor.
Okay.
Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Munni Madhipatla. I'm speaking as a Bike and Pedestrian Commissioner on Agenda Item Twenty-One. I fully understand, you know, this commission serves at the pressure of the council as an advisory body. There is no decision-making authority as such for this commission. So please take my comments in that context. I like the idea of, you know, expanding the scope of the commission as a complete road safety commission, and thus the name change as Complete Streets Commission looks reasonable. But I don't see the need for expanding the commission to a seven-member team. The workload in front of this commission is no more than the Planning Commission workload. They're doing fine with, you know, five-member teams, so why expand this team? The largest ever, you know, across all the commissions. Adding two more members will extend the discussions on every agenda item by forty percent as two more members now have to weigh in. I don't think, you know, we want the commission meetings to go till midnight. Thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you, Mooney. Next, we're on to Kitty Moore. Welcome, Kitty. Kitty.
Yes, Mayor Sharf. Okay, thank you. I do not support this proposal. The language appears to ensnare automobile traffic and public transit. Palo Alto has a Planning and Transportation Commission, and let me mention, I'm representing myself only. Staff has canceled the most recent two Planning Commission meetings while you're considering expanding the Bike-Ped Commission and increasing the number of members on that commission. The Planning Commission is underutilized, and the mission of each commission is now being muddied by this proposal. And the Planning Commission is tasked with reviewing the EIRs, which include transportation, and we have to have a certain level of expertise in order to do so. I, I really hope that you go over the language of this proposal and do not approve it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kitty. Next, we are on to Ilango Gangga. Welcome. Ilango, I'm allowing you to talk with it. There you go. Okay.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So my name is Ilango Gangga. I am a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, and today I'm representing myself. So I just wanted to have some points about this one. So I reviewed the draft ordinance and also the supporting, you know, materials here. So I'm kind of halfway through on whether, you know, to, are, are supporting this or not to support this proposal. You know, I noticed that some of the neighboring cities have some such commissions with expanded scope, more than just dealing with bicycle and pedestrian issues. I do see some merit in expanding the scope of the, you know, the current BPC or renaming it. But the thing is, like, you know, even the current, you know, ordinance allows the, the commission to look at, you know, just beyond bicycle and pedestrian issues. I kind of, you know, see, not, not so a strong reason to go and expand this to other transportation issues. And as the previous speaker spoke, you know, transportation issues also needs to be tied with the planning, because that requires, you know, projects and, you know, approvals and EARS and so on. And I don't think, you know, we want to muddy the waters there. And regarding expanding the scope, you know, we are already doing that. You know, the, the, the commission, the current Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission is already, you know, starting to partner with the Technology Commission in order to bring in tra- traffic technology for traffic safety that includes bicycle and pedestrian safety. And in addition to that, you know, there are other committees, two other committees that has been established to deal with Mission Zero and environmental issues and so on. Public engagement is already happening, and actually, it has become better this year as compared, compared to the past, and more could be done within this scope, okay, within the current scope. I don't see a good reason to expand the scope of the commission to seven members. Even our Planning Commission that has a lot more responsibility has just five members. You know, cities like Los Altos, that has been cited as an example, has five members. So even if the council is deciding to establish such a commission, I would recommend keeping the numbers to five. And diversity, this is an important point. You know, you said that, you know, one of your objectives is diversity. And in the past, it was packed with members from one advocacy group, and residents were just sidelined. And now this has been changed, and this year, you know, you are getting, bringing in the right, you know, skill set and right diversity here, and I encourage that. And we need to have people which not only bicycling, pedestrian safety, technology skills, transportation, not only that, finance and budgetary skills. All of this is needed in order for, you know, achieving the objectives. The council already has the opportunity to add members with the right diverse skills during the annual commission appointment process. There's no need to do this sometime in the mid-year right now. Lastly, I would like to point out the timing of the establishment of the Complete Streets Commission. Now, why is this being brought up in the mid-year? This could have been done at the end of the year. You could have, you know, along with the commission appointment process. The other thing is, the council should be really, be giving more time for the public to comment on the expanded scope and also on the, you know, the wording, exact wording on the draft ordinance, specifically on the responsibility scope, public engagement, et cetera. It's so ironic that, you know, you talk about expanding the scope of the commission, and you are changing the scope of the commission, and this particular issue did not come to the Bicycle Commission for review and approval, right? Our recommendation, that's an advisory commission. You did not even use that commission for, for the purpose and scope, what, what it is for. And I, I see that for many other issues. I don't, I don't.
Yeah, finish up. You're out of time.
I, I request the council to provide sufficient time for public review and commission review before bringing this forward for voting in a future, you know, council meeting. That's what I would suggest. Thank you.
Okay, next is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I sent several letters to the City Council about this item. Don't get me wrong, I think Bike and Ped does an excellent job. I'm just very, very concerned about, the first thing is, this should not be seven members. That's more than the Planning Commission. That's more than City Council. I, I really don't think we should have seven members. The other thing is the name, maybe if we were expanding this, we should be calling it the Pike, the Bike, and the Ped, and the Car Commission. I really think it, the bike part is really being pushed ninety percent of the time, and we're forgetting about the, that are, there are people who legally can go in cars, you know, the elderly, handicapped, me, et cetera. But I am overtly very, very concerned about the overinvolvement of the MTC in Complete Streets. MTC actually took over A-Bag three years ago. MTC and A-Bag have been pushing their big housing agenda. They have been pushing Plan Bay Area twenty fifty, and there is, I looked up a lot of it in MTC, and they have Complete Streets is actually part of Plan Bay Area twenty fifty. It's all over the MTC. I'm concerned that MTC is the one that's dictating that we have to have a Complete Streets Committee with a retention of bicycle people on it. Never, I'm not, hopefully, I'm not upsetting bike people, but it's just too much overinvolvement of MTC. It's, it's not, MTC and A-Bag are hostile to Cupertino, and I really don't want any more involvement at MTC and not getting them involved in our Bike and Ped Commission. So if we want to have a Transit Solutions Committee, let's do that, but don't, don't have Bike and Ped go on into Complete Streets, because you need the public input. Not everyone rides a bike, and I personally feel that the bikes have really been pushed ninety percent of the time in the last three to four years. We just need more input here, and I do think that keeping the scope of the Bike and Ped as Bike and Ped is a lot healthier for everyone, and then maybe we can do something else. But I'm, my overall arching is MTC is involved in this, and I do, I do not trust MTC or A-Bag at all. And having seven people is probably not good. Also, you need, if we're going to go to seven people in Complete Streets, we need to have these meetings on TV like we do with Planning Commission, City Council, posted agenda, like Park and Rec, et cetera. That's a big commission if you've got seven people. Anyway, I just don't think we should go down this road. My respect to everyone who's involved, but it's, I think we're just, we're combining. And also too, I don't think everybody on Bike and Ped Commission is an expert on all transit solutions, and they shouldn't.
You're out of time.
Anyway, all right. I don't think this is a good road to go down. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Eric Linskog. Welcome, Eric.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor and council members, I am a member of the, you know, the current Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, but I'm speaking as myself here tonight. I would like to speak in support of this proposal of expanding the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission into a Complete Streets Commission and in, in, you know, and also increasing it from five to seven members. I think the, you know, the Complete Streets idea that the street should be you know, workable and safe solutions for all modes of transportation is, is, is very important. And it's an improvement upon only today. Today, we're only focusing on bicycle and pedestrian issues, but you know, we can also focus on transit issues as well as general traffic calming to make our, you know, city more, more livable and safer for all modes of transportation and users of all ages and abilities. And i- expanding it from five to seven members would bring more, you know, even more diversity into this group, so that's a good thing. So I'm, I'd like, I'm, I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Next, we have Hung Way. Welcome. Hung Way, are you there? I'm trying to unmute you. You also have to unmute, though. Okay, there you go.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor Sharf, and council members and city staff. This is Hung Way. I do support the establishment of the Complete Streets Commission. This commission will benefit Cupertino residents and the Silicon Valley area as a whole by achieving the following three goals. First, expanding citizens' participation in communicating concern and support in addressing citywide transit issues in coordination with bike and pedestrian infrastructure expansion. This commission could maintain an active dialogue with Cupertino citizens and bike pedestrian pass transit users to coordinate the planning of organized infrastructure. Second, a better future lies in reducing carbon footprints by offering environmentally friendly transportation options. Innovation and education go hand in hand, enhancing citizens' knowledge, desire, and willingness to move forward in this direction. This commission will have the group wisdom and energy to take the lead in researching innovative transit options and offering educational programs, including and beyond bicycle and pedestrian expansion. Thirdly, as we are experiencing now with the COVID-nineteen crisis, things change. This commission will be able to create and monitor multi-year transit models by observing changes in future transit needs in order to provide a council and our citizens with updated recommendations on policies and proposed solutions. Citizen participation, group wisdom, innovation, coordination, and future planning are elements that this Complete Streets Commission can bring to the table with our support. Thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you, Hung Way. Next, I have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
My clicker wasn't working. Okay, thank you. So I agree with the first portion of speakers. Actually, Peggy Pace took the words out of my mouth, but then added some of her own that were better than mine. So I don't think this is a good idea, especially done in this manner. There's been no discussion. If you weren't paying attention to the agenda, I am the last one on the agenda. Wouldn't even know this was being considered. And I, too, have a sense and know that a large portion of residents believe that, that existing Bike-Ped Commission already has a great deal of, what people are calling it control. Let's call it. Huh, I don't know. I, i- it seems out of proportion to some of the other commissions, and I truthfully believe that they should already be having their meetings publicly and recorded. They should be televised and recorded already, and if you're, and the language of what their tasks are really doesn't seem much different, unless I'm missing something, than what it would be. Yet, you're starting with five people whose focus is Bike-Ped in, in most people's eyes, and I guess if you, I think, if you ask the commission themselves, they would agree that is their main focus. I, I just see a lopsided commission thrown together. Who, how do you add these two? Do you start over like Peggy recommended? I would say yes. How do you do that? How, I, I just think there needs to be way more discussion, but at this time, I think it's a bad idea. And maybe we have a transit commission instead of naming it. I don't know. There's just, it doesn't feel right. It doesn't feel comfortable, and I don't like the way it's being done currently. I mean, the way this was presented. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Next, David Fung. Welcome, David.
Hi, and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, Mayor and council members. I'm a Planning Commissioner, but I am speaking as an individual tonight. First of all, I wanted to say that I support the, I support the proposal on the table here, and I really believe that integrated solutions make for better solutions. One of the challenges that we've had as we try to make the streets friendlier for, for bikes and for pedestrians has been that it's become somewhat, it's often viewed to be adversarial, and you've heard that today in the comments. Some of the comments you've heard tonight. I, I really think a complete street solution really makes sure that there's a better balance of bikes, pedestrians, auto transport, and it also integrates some of the land use and planning issues, which come up with, you know, with the things that come before us in the Planning Commission. Last week, Dr. Richard Florida, he's a noted urbanist, gave a spur event that I listened to, and one of the things he talked about, his event, was actually talking about COVID, and how, how do you come out of, you know, kind of. One of the things that he talked about, that he, he identified as an issue was that the way that the COVID solutions have been identified, it's generally been driven by a medical viewpoint. And he really said, you know, if you had connected together a group of urbanists, economists, and medical people, you may have had a different, a different solution. And I mean, you kind of see the world kind of is wobbling toward that today. I think that that really balances a different set of needs, you know, the different set of needs and the different set of impacts. And having that kind of, having that kind of functionality in a Complete Streets group would really be an advantage. You know, the solution that comes out may be the same, maybe different than what, what you might have guessed, what the Bike-Ped Commission would have done, or it might be the same. But I think in any case, it'll be better from the integration and cooperation. So I support this, and I hope you all support it as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, David. Next, we have Jennifer Sheeran. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hello.
Hi.
Get what I was going to say. Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I wish to express my support for expanding the Bike-Ped Commission to create a Complete Streets Commission. Though I'm currently an active member of the Bike-Ped Commission, I've also been past chair and vice chair of the commission. But today, I speak as myself only. Our current commission considers bike and bicycle and pedestrian issues, which they should, as were the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. To state, which I've heard earlier this evening, that this is, quote, "packed with members of only one advocacy group," and that this is a negative, seems a little odd to me. I can't imagine, for example, appointing Parks and Rec Commissioners who are against parks. So, and, and that's kind of the, the thought is, shouldn't we be for people walking and biking? I, I think so. Recently, the focus on our commission, including our chair, has changed mostly towards traffic management and monitoring, including creating a subcommittee for technology use for traffic safety in April. It would seem that changing to a Complete Streets Commission would be a way to address these traffic issues while still having the commission encourage walking and biking trips for residents of all ages, which unfortunately appears to be less. which unfortunately appears to be less of a priority currently than the name Bicycle Pedestrian Commission would make one assume. Some of these commissioners have spoken tonight to encourage you not to change anything. And, you know, that's probably because the focus has changed on traffic. And that's great, but for a Bike-Ped Commission, we should be considering Bike-Ped issues as well. And, you know, other speakers have said, this is what the focus is of the commission, but they haven't attended a meeting in six to 12 months. So I'm not really certain if they really know what the current situation is. I fully support some of the things that some of the other speakers have said, such as David Fung just before me, that this is a way to allow a synergy, especially in this time where we're seeing a lot more people on the streets walking and biking, and we need comprehensive solutions. Not just one, one way or another, or, and only having five people on the commission. I think we're going to be stretched. And not only that, but we're only going to see one side of everything. And that may be for Bike-Ped, or you may prefer looking only at traffic. But I think we need to look at it holistically. So thank you for your time and I appreciate all your work.
Jennifer, next, we have Sima Linskog. Welcome.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Mayor Sharif, esteemed council members. Thank you for giving me the time to speak today. I want to echo what David Fung and Jennifer and a few other speakers and Hung Way have said. I fully support this change to a Complete Streets Commission because that's the future. It's, you know, that's where we're heading as a, as a city and as a, as a world. It's like, I just read an article in the New York Times today where they said that bikes are becoming more valuable than toilet paper. They're the next toilet paper, that everybody is buying bikes and rediscovering biking to work. And that's not going to change anytime soon, given where we are in this pandemic. More people are walking, more people are biking. And if we're trying to come up with solutions to make our city more livable, looking just at a narrow, with a narrow mandate of just biking and, and walking within a whole street is, is not as effective as we can be. And as a city, I think we do need to be more forward-thinking and more future planning. And that this complete street solution helps us to get there. And I don't know that we should be afraid of it or, you know, not do it because of conspiracy theories that the, that is getting packed with some advocacy group or the other. You know, this is, other, other cities have seen the wisdom of this. I don't know why Cupertino should be left behind. We should be embracing the future and not be afraid of it. So thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you, Sima. Next, we have Gerhard Eschelbeck. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Sharif and members of the Cupertino City Council. I'm a resident of Cupertino and also the chair of the Cupertino Bicycle Commission. But I'm speaking today as a resident on behalf of myself. I think the proposed objectives of this Complete Streets Commission are largely the same as the objective of the existing Bicycle Commission. Even city staff, based on discussions, is not completely clear what the changes actually are. In fact, the current Bicycle Pedestrian Commission has even formed subcommittees working with other commissions, including the Technology, Information and Communication Commission. So therefore, many of the aspects are covered already today. Therefore, the intended expansion in objectives of such a Complete Streets Commission is not entirely clear or not very sophisticated developed. While changing the name of the commission may be possible, I can tell you, based on past year's experience, I do not recommend the changing the size of the commission. I do, however, strongly recommend reconsidering this proposal and strongly encourage and invite you to join an upcoming commission meeting to develop for yourself a deeper understanding of the focus, scope and effectiveness of the current Bicycle Commission, and also to develop a picture about its inner workings before making any decision on this topic. The current commission has a well-diversified membership representing the different aspects of Complete Street. The overhead of seven members is not justified and also not practiced in most our other commissions. Thanks for listening and looking forward for continuing this dialogue.
Okay, thank you, Gerhard. And I don't see any more hands raised, so we will end.
Mr. Mayor, I have one email to read.
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
From Linda Wyckoff. Mayor announced the expansion of the Bike-Ped Commission to now be called Complete Streets Commission as a state of the city, but what need generated this announcement? Term Bike-Ped is now replaced with the curious term multimodal transportation, which includes, of all things, cars. Why is traffic being taken away from the Public Safety Commission? How was it decided that this revised commission should have seven commissioners instead of five as all commissions within the city currently have? This would be the only commission in the city of Cupertino with more than five members. How will these additional two commissioners be vetted and selected? Why does the mayor say there is now a need for more diversity of viewpoints within this commission? From my perspective, as I've attended several Bike-Ped Commission meetings, I see there is currently much diversity of opinion among the commissioners. Some elected officials and staff in the city have a tendency to override the voices of those who do not provide unanimity with their causes. Could that be at play here? This reorganization could be construed as a desire for homogeneity, homogeneity among commissioners with regard to opinions instead of diversity. The mayor stated that commissioners must have interest in bike and pedestrian activities. A good many people in our community are pedestrians who enjoy walking as recreation. However, it is a small percentage of our city that is intensely devoted to cycling. This is by far the most vocal component of the Bike-Ped Commission. It would appear that this could be construed as an attempt to silence the voices of those who may voice opinions that differ from the norm. Was that possibly a factor when determining this increased number of commissioners? What enforcement or recommendation authority will this expanded commission have? Why do we need a public commission that addresses streets? Currently, public works cover street repairs and normal functions of their job. Do we have, do we now need private citizens to be inspecting city streets for needed repairs and suggesting new traffic flow patterns for congestion? Very few people have much expertise with streets unless they work in that field and are trained in civil engineering. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Just to correct, I want to point out that we do have one commission with nine members. So to say that every commission has five is not, not, not true. Anyway, we will bring it back to the council now. I've got a load of comments, but I'll let other people speak first. Let's start with John first. And because of the hour, each person can, you know, have five minutes, but, but please no more. Welcome, John.
I think I'd like to go later. I'd like to hear more discussion. This is a new topic, so.
Okay, council member Chow.
Can, can, can the staff define what's complete streets? Why are we using a term that most people don't understand?
A complete streets is actually a term that has been used in the transportation industry for some time now and promoted by all of the, a lot of the regional transportation engineers and planners. And what it basically means is that in the design of streets, you, you don't focus on any one mode of transportation or any one user of the roadway. You, you ensure that the roadway provides equal accommodations for bicycles, pedestrians, cars, transit, the disabled, the young, the elderly. Basically, you're not, you're not discriminating against any particular user, nor are you favoring any particular user, but you're ensuring that the roadways are accommodating to everybody.
Yeah, so I looked it up. This is a term promoted by advocates, the same advocacy groups who promote the smart growths. And then they are advocating this. You say everything is equal, but then they really want to reduce the, on the emphasis on car usage, right? So that's the real intent. And for a city like Cupertino, where we have very wide major corridor like Stevens Creek and the Anza, I'm not sure. Is that something we are promoting? I see that other cities have adopted a complete street ordinance, so they buy into that idea. We don't have that, right? Did you adopt any complete streets ordinance?
We did, council did approve a complete streets resolution a couple of years back. That's something that VTA has required in order for the city to be eligible for certain types of grants. And just to clarify what I stated earlier, it doesn't necessarily imply that every street has to accommodate every mode of travel. You can still have, say, a De Anza Boulevard, that street which primary purpose is to, you know, carry large numbers of people across and through town so long as you also provide other parallel streets, smaller streets that can provide similar accommodations for bicycles and pedestrians. But as a whole, the city is committed to providing accommodation for everybody.
Okay, so I think it, it does make sense that someone needs to be talking about traffic safety, transportation, how do we have more transit options in Cupertino via shuttle? And parking issues, these things, I don't know whether they'd be only planning or public safety. And now we have a third commission, it should be discussed. It gets confusing, but I guess someone needs to talk about it. Whether it's Bike-Ped, I'm not sure, but I would rather, even if we rename it, don't use the term that from advocacy group. In the other few years, it might be a different term. Let's just call it Transportation Commission, for example. Or transportation and bike pedestrian safety, something like that, then it's more general. And I also don't think we want to have seven members. Which commission has nine members?
Teen Commission. Am I muted? Teen, doesn't Teen have nine?
That's Teen Commission.
Right.
Yeah, that's different.
Oh, you asked which commission had nine, so I told you.
So yeah, that's, that's totally different. So then it's, it comes to become equity. Are we going to change all commissions into seven members? That's something to talk about. And I also have a concern on how this item even got on the agenda. How many staff hours did it take to bring it to the council with the complete resolution, everything all from the? How many staff hours that?
Yeah, I don't know exactly how many staff hours. It wasn't a tremendous effort. A few hours doing some research with other cities and thinking about the roles that would make sense for the new commission.
Okay, so last year, the work program in 2019, during the goal setting, I think we have an item about bring something for the council to talk about what new commission or committees we might have. Maybe community engagement, transportation, economic development. Or, so that item was there. Nothing has been done for that item. And that item specifically said, there should be community outreach. We should check with all the commissions that would be impacted to get their feedback. That was the item. Not done. And now boom, I see this thing out of nowhere. So I'm curious, how did this get on here?
Yeah, finish up. That's, you've been going for six minutes now.
Okay, so.
So let's go to the next person. Darcy, do you want to go or I can go? It doesn't matter.
Yeah, sure, I'll go. I'll make my remarks brief. You know, I think, I think we do have some serious issues that we need to address with regard to traffic and transit. I know that the issue of both of those are particularly transit, if you're talking about public transit. They're unfortunately politically loaded at this point because they've been tied to legislation that actually, you know, also compels housing density or other types of density that actually don't really help the housing issue in the long term and overall. But I think that it is also really important to pay attention to infrastructure such as transit. I mean, that can go without saying and it's very obvious, but it bears, you know, repeating. We need a good public transit solution. We need to be able to really think through how we deal with our traffic mitigations. We have a very distinct set of problems at two of our tri-school areas, one centered around Cupertino High, one centered around Montevista High, and they're associated and nearby schools. And so there are, you know, when the economy picks up, you see very significant upticks in the, in the traffic. And so I think it is very important that we address this issue. I don't know whether it makes sense to take five people that we've interviewed for specifically bicycle and pedestrian oriented issues and transfer them over to a commission that has a completely expanded purview that includes essentially the transit issues like car traffic as well as public transit. So I, I need, and I think that the idea of having a comprehensive approach, irrespective of what you call it, makes sense. But I'm really glad that the city clerk read into the comments, the email as well, because that made me think of another commission that is implicated from the resident's email, which is the Public Safety Commission. And so I would support a commission that is focused on transit issues that revolve around the use of the automobile and, and our need for better public transit. We have public transit. I think we're all in agreement that it needs to become more effective. So I think between your planning commission, which I should say, actually in their charter does have our, our transit, you know, and transportation issues in there. And I think much more probably has people that are specifically interviewed for that type of expertise. You know, between planning commission, our existing Bike-Ped, public safety, the Technology, Information, Communications Commission, as well as a transit commission, they could very well form a subcommittee and start talking about these comprehensive types of transit issues. I don't think we put it all into Bike-Ped. I mean, to me, Bike-Ped is very different from the idea, irrespective of what you call it, of complete streets or complete transit planning for, for your city. So I would not support this recommendation. I would support certainly thinking in a very comprehensive and stepwise fashion as to where, where our gap exists right now and what kind of commission can we create? I know we've taken that off of our work plan earlier this evening, but if we could just consider one commission, I would be happy to, you know, support that in the future if it were more focused upon, you know, what, what seems to be more of the gap, which is, you know, the roads, auto transit, as well as, as mass transit. And to interview people specifically for that expertise. And again, this is something that we've talked about in the past as well. We want to have more of the subcommittee-like interaction between the commissions or at least the inter-commission communications. And this is precisely the way that you do it. You identify a legitimate problem and you take core expertises from various groups. So that's what I would do. You know, I commend and appreciate the staff as well as the mayor for putting this forward. As it's baked right now, I think that it could use a rethinking as to what the problem that we're trying to deal with is and how to, you know, formulate a, a good comprehensive solution to it.
Okay, you're done? Am I muted? Okay.
Yeah, I'm done.
So, you know, since, since originally this was an idea I had, I, obviously I support it. I think the reduction of carbon emissions is going to require more efficient transit, not just bikes and pedestrians, but more efficient vehicle usage is going to be required. We are not going to get people out of their vehicles, but if we going to get people out of their vehicles. But if we could get a small percentage increase in bikes and pedestrians by, um, having more efficient, uh, transportation, we would be taking a big step. Um, the seven people, uh, I mean, there were multiple reasons, uh, it would be tasking this commission with significant additional responsibilities, um, during the transition. They would be working much more with other commissions, including, um, tick, planning, um, public safety. Uh, even library and teen commission would, would be involved because of course, you know, a lot of the teens that are not driving yet, you know, they would be more, uh, interested in, in bicycles and bicycle infrastructure. With COVID nineteen, uh, one of the unintended side effects is going to be less use of mass transit. It's being discouraged now. This is going to increase vehicle traffic and hopefully increase bicycle and pedestrian traffic more than the vehicle traffic. Uh, I have my doubts, but it's something we should be working on. Um, there's going to be increased demand for off-street, uh, transportation methods for pedestrians and cyclists like, like, uh, bicycle infrastructure. Uh, both bike, protected bike lanes and, uh, off-street trails. Uh, this is a side benefit. With seven people, you would reduce the probability of Brown Act violations since you'd uh, the majority would be different. You need four, for a majority. Um, so you could, you know, you could be talking to three people instead of two people about issues. Uh, I think, um, increasing the size of the commission will bring more diversity with a wider skillset. Uh, you may have people that know more about working with tick than, than planning and vice versa. Uh, I, I definitely could support a requirement of minutes and recording and or, um, broadcasting the meetings. Uh, as to the name, I understand council member Chow's reluctance about the complete streets name. Um, yeah, I'd be fine with naming it something else. Transportation Commission, Transit Commission, whatever, but I do agree with the negative implications of complete streets, uh, how it relates to things like, um, what is it? The, oh, smart growth, you know, another, another term that's used, uh, inappropriately. Um, so that's how I feel. I don't think we have a majority here, but, uh, Rod.
Well, I, I would, um, like to speak up in favor of this also. I felt for quite a long time that we have paid insufficient attention to, uh, transit as a mode. Um, we have so little of it, it's so scarce, we just don't know enough about it. And we need, uh, we need folks to understand what's going on in the region and help us. Uh, and help our residents, uh, understand what benefits can be brought if we could improve our public transportation system. Uh, complete streets is a, I have no issue with it. It's a general term of art that's been used for at least a decade to talk about. Thinking about the fact that, you know, while many people consider a street to be for a car, uh, there are these other modes that we ought to really think about. And you know, um, we have all kinds of new things, uh, that, that have popped up in that last decade. We have, um, we have e-bikes. That's making it easier for people to bike. We have scooters, right? We have all these different things and, and we need policies, I think, to accommodate these, these new, new forms of, of mobility. Um, and we should also, um, I think really, as I've said, and, and Darcy made this point too, really pay attention to transit, but I, I see them as, um, all different forms of mobility. So rather than having one commission thinking about modes X, Y, and Z, and, and the others thinking of, you know, mode W, I, I, I support, um, support what, if you don't like complete streets, it is a little, okay, yes, it's a little engineering wonky. We can call it the Transportation Commission. I like that idea. And, and, um, put more people on it because frankly, I think it's one of those, um, things that we've, um, yeah, we need to focus our additional attention on. If you, if you ask people, you know, what they're most dismayed about uh, in the city, I think we might all agree that, uh, increased traffic congestion and uh, people wring their hands about what to do about it. I think this, this, um, this commission could be expanded to help us I think through these problems, solicit input from our residents and, um, really advise the council on, on how we, uh, work in the region, uh, to, uh, to connect our, our cities. So that's where I am. Thanks.
Okay, very good. Uh, okay, and Tom, we'll go back to you now.
Good, uh, thank you. So, by all means, transportation is one of our primary, uh, issues. Uh, you know, we're landlocked, we have all this through traffic. So traffic in itself is is a primary concern. And so by all means, I would really like to see, you know, uh, more, more activity, for lack of a better word, more activity as it pertains to addressing traffic. And there are so many aspects. Uh, of course, we want to get away from the carbon footprint, electric cars, charging stations, shuttles, congestion relief. Working with the neighboring communities for which the through traffic, you know, while we can't change an intersection because we only own half of it, um, what these things do is they create really a full-time job. And so I'd, I'd be concerned that we take a very good commission that's dedicated, uh, to improve bike and pad for the community. There's no question in the community's mind, they have, uh, an a, a group dedicated to looking for bike and pad solutions, you know, they have children, you know, the residents have children, you know, I got three of them, you know, four, seven, and thirteen. And I'm concerned about them and knowing that the city has a uh, bike and pad commission that's focused on it and safer routes to school, um, these traffic calming things, uh, to me that, wow, I want to go live in that community because they, they have that. And so I, I just kind of see that, uh, you know, trying to put two big functions in, into one, you know, definitely there's crossover and, and so, you know, wow, we get the economy of scale, you know, bring two together and you get for, uh, just seven commissioners, you get you know, twice the, uh, the bang, but I, I really don't think that that's gonna give us the best result. I'd really like to see commissions bring us, uh, transportation solutions. You know, um, as I understand it, I don't have an electric car, but as I understand it, you know, um, uh, Tesla's, uh, uh, plan in order to get wide adoption, they had to set up charging stations between the Bay Area and LA. So if you're going to LA with your Tesla, you know where to stop. These are really, uh, important issues. Gee whiz, should we have, you know, specific charging stations in Cupertino that are going to be promoting people having electric cars? They know where to stop and get them charged. Um, the ones that would be needing to use public transportation and how do they get the last mile? You know, do they take a via shuttle? Or do we work with, with getting other, uh, uh, routes for the shuttle? So again, to me, this is just a, a really, uh, big task in itself that's transportation. As opposed to the bike and pad being focused on, uh, these short distances, much shorter distances, uh, uh, heavily on safety, heavily on uh, children, heavily on schools, um, exercise and, uh, places for people to, to go walking, things of that nature. Um, boy, when there's an opportunity for, you know, a new, uh, creek trail or something like that, these are going to be, you know, this group, this commission is going to be looking for, gee whiz, how can we, how can we make that something that will get people from point A to point B? Uh, how much will it cost? Should it be class one, class two, class three, class four? That's their charter and that's a full-time job, so to speak. It's really not a full-time job for anybody because everybody's a volunteer and working their day jobs. And so I, I just get concerned trying to put the two together will kind of leave us with, you know, uh, 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 a mix that we thought it did was something good, but then we ultimately could find out that it actually went the wrong way. You know, increasing something is fairly easy to do. Dissecting it and moving it back is very hard to do. So I think we really need to be careful going forward. Um, a study session that could give us a better understanding, give us some, some, some so-called examples of how a commission that's focused on bikes and pedestrian routes would be able to tackle an important transportation issue. Um, we're going to have, conceivably, we're going to have Valco, we're going to have, um, uh, one point eight million square feet of office. Oh, there's going to be bikes and pets. But if you did a survey or asked, you know, whoever that new, uh, business is going to be, what's the percentage of bike and pad people versus what are the percentage of cars that are going to be coming from Modesto, Tracy, Salinas, Hollister, Gilroy? How can we accommodate that type of traffic on our roads? Well, I'm going to be looking to the Transportation Commission. And I, I just would think I'm going to be somewhat saddened if, uh, complete streets. You know, gee whiz, what do you, what, what were you able to contribute to, to help our community deal with? You know, another ten thousand workers, you know, trying to get in it. Well, there's, you know, five hundred bike and pad people there. Yeah, and the other ninety-five, five hundred.
You've gone on for ten minutes now.
Really? Wow. So it is, so at any rate, I, I struggle with that. I'd really like to see us, uh, have more. Um, and, uh, more commissioners, you know, another group gives more, uh, residents an opportunity to bring their skillset and their ideas to the mix. So, so I would really hope that we do continue to explore, uh, uh, commissions, but, uh, I, I would struggle with it too. Too quick without the supporting information on this one.
So, um, one, couple of the, uh, point out, John, I know, um, I know you've said seven may not be able to do twice as much work. And yeah, I thought about that too. So it sounds like you are, you would be fine if we had nine or eleven commissioners. Is that true?
Well, as we see with just five on the city council, and what time is it now? I mean, it's eleven twenty-four. Uh, how, how, you know, what would nine do to, to the, uh, clock?
I'm being facetious. I mean, nine is probably, nine is probably too many. I thought, you know, seven, given the increased responsibilities, it's not twice as much responsibility, but maybe another thirty percent.
I'd really like to see some serious efforts in, in terms of electric vehicles and how we can really make this community.
Okay, but I mean, you also pointed out, you know, and it's true, there are long-distance cars, but a lot of the traffic in our city is short distance. It's people driving their kids to school because they're terrified of them walking or riding their bikes. It's people going to the store, uh, something where, you know, if there were safe, safe routes, they might be willing to not always drive. I mean, personally during this whole thing, I've been riding my bike to Trader Joe's, which is actually in another city. And, uh, it also makes me buy less because I can't carry as much stuff. Um, but I think, you know, I know, yeah, the name complete streets is not great, but it really goes to the essence of what we're trying to do of saying, yeah, you can drive your car, but, you know, we really want to make these streets suitable for everybody, walk pedestrians, cyclists, and as Rod point, you know, scooters, they seem to have died down a little the popularity, but electric bikes are increasing popularity.
Then don't keep postponing bike Boulevard project. And put more emphasis on bike path that actually improve bike path on roads, right?
Well, yeah, both of that, but, but the problem is a lot of people, when you talk to them, you know, while we're going off topic here, as they say, I don't feel safe on roads. I feel safe on off-street. Pass and stayed on Stevens Creek and on, and on Los Gatos Creek Trail and Santa Masaquino. You know, they ride on roads when.
To have off-streets to reach anywhere in Cupertino. That's why we need, if you want to be safe, you, we, we need to improve on-street, uh, transportation. But anyway, I'd like to propose that we will, we had an item from the last work program to con, to consider what commissions we should have. I think transportation is important and transit have a, it's a very complex issue. So we need people who are really passionate about that and does take transit to be on the commission to really think about those issues. And we have other things, for example, other cities I mentioned earlier, they have general plan update committee that specifically review general plan, uh, regularly. And other cities have finance committee that actually look at city budget. We should have this discussion first.
Okay.
And let's have that early so that we might decide before the next recruitment for commission interview. Maybe we need to decide this before September, then the commission, uh, interview, uh,
Yeah, well.
Out, we can interview in January. So.
You know, I, I, you know, personally, I don't think that doing this would exclude the possibility of other commissions in the future, and we do have plenty of volunteers. Although it is not free to add more commissions, there is costs and staffing, uh, for each additional commission. Um, but, you know, it seems like Rod and I are the only ones in favor of this, so it isn't, um, it doesn't look like we have a majority to move forward.
Uh, you know, I, I'd just like to ask my colleagues to think about how much time we've spent, invested, heard from the public. We seem to be in, uh, often in mode where we can't decide anything and we need endless meetings. We need endless time. I just ask you to think, is this such a hard decision for you? I mean, how much information do we really need to, to make a decision? I, I don't, I don't find, you know, regurgitating all of this over and over again, particularly productive of our time or the public's. So I'll leave it there.
Well stated, Rod.
So do you want to take a vote now or what do you want to do?
Uh, we can take a vote, sure.
Like John, like Darcy stated, I'm also not, I think we should have a some, a commission looking at transportation, but I'm not comfortable asking the existing members of bike pad commission to take on a totally different role.
Well, that's why we would expand the commission to have.
No, I don't want to do your interview for this either. I'd like to have a different commission. Maybe we, we interview everyone and have a focus on the new purpose.
So, uh, for the record, I think we just ought to take a vote and be done. I will move that we, we, uh, accept the staff report, uh, calling this the Transportation Commission, chartering them with all modes of transportation, including transit. And, uh, that we, we make it a, a seven, uh, member body.
All right, I'll second.
And let's just be done. Vote however you want to vote.
I appreciate that. Go ahead, Pearson, conduct the vote.
You want me to actually read the title of the ordinance?
Sure, yeah, yeah, let's read up my title only and conduct the first reading.
Okay, it's the first reading ordinance number two zero dash two two six. The ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending chapter two point nine two. The Cupertino Municipal Code to Establish the Complete Streets Commission. Councilmember Chow?
No.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
No.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
The motion fails with Chow, Willie, and Paul voting no.
Okay, wonderful. Let's move on.
I appreciate the vote. Just clarity, right? It's okay.
There's no more oral communications. Let's move on to council and staff comments. So. Let's start with staff comments and future agenda items. Okay, um any staff comments?
I've made all my comments upfront.
Okay, seeing none, let's move on to um council comments. Um I don't have any more council comments. Uh Darcy?
Uh no, I promised I would limit mine to.
Right, okay, very good. Um Councilmember Willie?
So uh comments, so on five twenty-six, I attended the uh Shin Shin Educational Foundation. They donated uh twenty-five uh thousand masks to uh uh the Valley Med. And uh they asked us to attend and they were pretty happy that I I did attend and they asked me to speak a little bit. So that was good. The other one I would suggest or toss out, so I'm very uh uh energized. By when I go to uh Safeway, when I go to get gas, when I go to uh Home Depot. To see how well the community has accepted the use of masks. Accepted the social distancing of uh six feet, how uh. You know, it's it's a pretty much given now that if people are not feeling well, they should stay home. So that we're not seeing people coughing, sneezing uh around other people. And that tells me that I think we really are at a point of being able to uh embrace. More and more businesses opening up. I think there's still a lot of uh uh unknown, you know. Different businesses have different types. I mean, what do you do with haircut and dentists and things like that? But in general, I think I I'm energized that we are moving in the right direction. And that we are making significant strides. So I'll leave it at that. Well. And that I really think that we need a local testing uh 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 entity. If not in Cupertino, you know, maybe it's shared, you know, right between Cupertino and Sunnyvale. Something like that so that uh it is readily available. When people need to get checked so that they can determine whether they they do need to isolate themselves or. Or it was just allergies. And so I would hope that we can can really push for that. Thank you.
I apologize for always forgetting something, but to actually respond to uh Councilmember Willie, we're looking good for Creekside Park. We got confirmation from county.
For the uh mobile testing station, wonderful.
That's all the detail I have, though. I have no other details.
And will it be a couple of days a week or, you know?
No details. I have no details yet. It's just that they.
When it's coming.
Not yet. I'll let you guys know.
Okay, great.
Okay, um oh, yeah, one comment. I did go and get tested uh last Friday. Over in San Jose at the fairgrounds. Fortunately, it was negative, but I thought. Uh asymptomatic people should be tested, so I went and did it. It was free. It doesn't hurt at all. They. You sit in your car and you do the thing with the swab and give it to them and you're done. Anyway, uh next is Councilmember Chow.
Oh, so they test everyone now?
Yes, even even though they start screening you on the website, it doesn't matter if you say you have no symptoms. Um. There's plenty, if there's too much testing capacity and not enough people now, but people don't know about it.
That's good to know. Uh so um I attended a um donation by an organization. They donated two hundred uh lunchboxes to uh emergency room nurses at El Camino Hospital. This is done by Han Ling Organization and Han Hua. They are also with the youth group. And also the Taiwanese government, Taiwan has opened up their mask uh export. And the PPE export. So the Taiwanese government has uh gotten some masks and they want to donate to Cupertino City. Because of their sister city relationship uh with us. Um so that should be coming sometime mid-June. Hmm, yeah. So in terms of future agenda item. I think we had this agenda on potential commissions and committee. Yeah, it might take some staff time, but then we are also making use of free volunteers to help us study issues. And uh. That has been on the agenda last year. We didn't get any chance to talk about it. I'm not sure now even this year, if we start the discussion right away. Maybe we might get something by uh September. I think we need something by September so that we can announce to the community and then we can do the interview in January. So uh I hope the staff can consider the timeline for this item that's in this year's the work program. So that maybe we can form certain new commissions to to help us out. On transportation, on any of these important issues. And I'm surprised to learn Planning Commission canceled the two meetings. When we have, I thought we have a whole list of objective standards to review. Um how come they have no business to call? That's surprising. Hmm, yeah, so, okay.
Okay, um let's see, Rod?
Yeah, thanks. Ba- based on our conversation earlier, I'm assuming we'll have a resolution uh on Friday.
Right.
To consider. Um I I would also appreciate an update on that time on. What if any conversations we've been able to have with the organizers potentially about. Um uh you know, offering what we might think of as larger, more accommodating spaces, safer spaces. If there's any update, I'd appreciate hearing about it at that time for any protests in our city and um. I would also, uh as I suggested, would would appreciate us agenda agendizing at the earliest opportunity. Uh um some kind of uh conversation with, uh could be a forum. It it wouldn't have to necessarily be a formal council meeting, but I think, you know, we ought to really understand. Um uh what what our policies are, what our training is. Um I I don't, I think, you know, people don't really know um where our law enforcement agency stands. And I think it would be great to to have the sheriff or perhaps the captain, but. Or maybe both of them, um you know, be clear with residents about um. How they view this and how this this wouldn't happen here because, or or maybe it would and maybe there. You know, changes that are in order uh that we might help uh affect as as an agency that contracts with the sheriff. But I I do think um I think we need to hear from our our law enforcement agency about the incident in Minneapolis and and. Um really, really understand um, you know, um. How how this won't happen uh in our jurisdiction or or what steps we're taking to make sure that it can't. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I got an email today um from a resident with a long list of questions. Um regarding, you know, the specific policies of the um they. The resident called the Cupertino Police Department. I guess they were unfamiliar with the fact we don't actually have our own police department.
People don't know, right?
Yeah, but it's fine. But I did, I forwarded that list of questions on to the captain. And I think a lot of those are what we should have a, I don't know if you want to call it a study session or what, but just to. Learn, you know, what the policies of the depart- Sheriff's Department is with regard to uh protests.
And have an opportunity to ask questions, right?
Yeah, exactly. So so I would certainly favor putting that on on an agenda and and as soon as possible.
And and I I I would also like, I I'd just like to say, Stephen, that your statement at the beginning of the meeting um. Was was so eloquent and well-thought-out and uh received rave reviews from my family here, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, is there anything else that anyone has?
Are you going to post your statement from the beginning?
Well, I just suggest that some of that language, you know, you work with staff and and incorporate uh some of that language in the proposed resolution for us to all consider.
Okay.
And if there is time, can we get this update from police department maybe Friday about their current practices?
Um perhaps.
Busy this week.
It's a lot of stuff. Yeah, they may be too busy.
If they're ready, then, yeah, okay. I forgot an item that. For this Friday, I know we will discuss uh a a way for restaurants to do business in open air, but and I'm wondering. Should we also consider that for any business?
Correct.
Someone could be selling hats outdoors, right?
So. It's any retail.
So it's not just restaurants. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, um.
I'm gonna circle back to one of the items that uh Councilmember Chow suggested. Uh with regard to the follow-up on commissions, uh insofar as the transportation or transit aspect of that is concerned. I'd like to second that request. Thanks.
Okay. Uh let's see, so I think we don't have um. Anything else for tonight? I just am amazed that we're adjourning before midnight.
Gosh.
Don't know what to do with all that extra time. Okay, so thank you, everybody.
Say.
Hello.
I need to think of something to say.
You still have something to say?
No, I have to think of something.
No, 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 we're done. Thank you. Good night, everybody. Adjourned.